This meeting is called to order, if you would please read the call.
Notice of Public Meeting of the City Commissioner of the City of Brownsville pursuant to Chapter 551 Title 5 of the Texas Government Code. The Texas Open Meetings Act. Notice is hereby given that City Commissioner of the City of Brownsville, Texas, in accordance with Article 5, Section 12 of the Charter of said city, will convene an executive session and regular meeting on Tuesday, May 15, 2007, at 5:15 PM, 6:00 PM, in the commission chambers on the second floor of the Brownsville City Hall, Federal Building located at 1001 East Elizabeth Street, Brownsville, Cameron County, Texas. Executive Session, Item A, Discussion Pursuant to Section 551.072 of the Texas Government Code Regarding Real Property. Executive Session, Item B, Discussion Pursuant to Section 551.072 of the Texas Government Code Regarding Real Property.
All right, some moving going in executive session?
Motion by Commissioner Longoody, second by Commissioner Royall, in favor?
Aye.
I'll oppose, most carries will be in executive session.
According to my watch, it's six o'clock. Don't look at the one on the wall.[101.22][101.22](Laughter). Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the City Commission meeting of the City of Brownsville, Texas. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. This evening, we have Victoria Cavazos Castañón from Hudson Elementary and her friend Samantha Garcia, also from Hudson, leading us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas one principle.
Thank you, ladies. Be sure you guys get their names so we can... Leading us in the invocation this evening is Pastor Reverend John Phillips from the Central Christian Church. Reverend?
Let us pray. Our Father, we love you and thank you that you give us the privilege to serve you in different capacities. And today, Lord, we just thank you that you've given to us city commissioners that desire to make this city the best that it can be. And I just thank you for each of these men and women that you've sent to lead us and to represent us. And I pray that you'd give them wisdom and knowledge and discernment as they make decisions. And I pray, Father, the decisions that are made tonight will not only benefit us now, but benefit our children in the future. And I thank you, Father, for our mayor, and ask your blessings upon him and his family, upon each commissioner and their families and their children. And, Father, we just ask you for protection and ask you to bless the things we say and do, in your son's name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Reverend. You may be seated. All right, we have several proclamations this week. The first one is for National Police Week. Do we have any police officers in the house?
Couple.[238.12][238.12](Laughter).
They said they wanted to put the best-looking guy in the middle, so you and the chief can argue.[295.52][295.52](Laughter). This is a proclamation of the City Commissioner of Brownsville, Texas, designating May 13 through the 19th, 2007, as National Police Week, and May 15, 2007, as Peace Officers' Memorial Day. Whereas the Congress and President of the United States have designated May 15 as Peace Officer Memorial Day, and the week in which May 15 falls is National Police Week, and whereas 145 law enforcement officers were killed in the line of duty in 2006, and whereas the members of the law enforcement agency of the City of Brownsville play an essential role in safeguarding the rights and freedoms of the City of Brownsville, and whereas it is important that all citizens know and understand the duties, responsibilities, hazards, and sacrifices of their law enforcement agency, and that members of a law enforcement agency recognize their duty to serve the people by safeguarding life and property against violence and disorder, and by protecting the innocent against deception and the weak against oppression. And whereas the men and women of the law enforcement agency of the City of Brownsville unceasingly provide a vital public service, now therefore we, the members of the City Commission of the City of Brownsville, Texas, by virtue of the authority vested by the Charter of said city, do hereby designate May 13 through the 19th, 2007, as National Police Week, with appropriate ceremonies and observances in which all of our people may join in commemorating law enforcement officers past and present who by their faithful and loyal devotion to their responsibilities have rendered a dedicated service to their communities and in doing so have established for themselves an enviable and enduring reputation for preserving the rights and security of all citizens, and further call upon the citizens of Brownsville to observe Tuesday, May 15, 2007, as Peace Officers Memorial Day, in honor of those law enforcement officers who through their courageous deeds have made the ultimate sacrifice and service to their community or have become disabled in the performance of duty, and let us recognize and may respect to the survivors of our fallen heroes. Done on this 15th day of May, 2007, signed by the mayor and the city commissioners. Ladies and gentlemen, it goes without saying that without the men and women that make up the police departments throughout our country, we wouldn't be able to enjoy the safety and security that each of us enjoys in our lives. These men and women go above and beyond the call of duty, and without their dedication and their commitment to sacrifice and serve, we wouldn't be able to enjoy the liberties and responsibilities that we have. And therefore, please join me in thanking very much and giving the appreciation they so much deserve, not just today, not just this week, but every single day of the year and every single day of our lives, because without them, we wouldn't be able to enjoy them.[455.62][455.62](Applause). Chief, if you'd like to say a few words? Unless Bill's gonna do it.
Thank you, guys.
Mayor, members of the City Commission, and to the attending public, on behalf of all the police officers from the Brownsville Police Department, we thank you for this proclamation. Of course, it's something that... That without the support of the commission, our city manager, and definitely the citizens of this community, it would not be possible. Definitely, it takes a team effort. It's a team effort for this community to be safe, and I think we're just a part of that. And we're glad to be a part of that, and we take our job very seriously. We're not perfect. We strive to be, but we're not. Definitely keep us in our prayers at all times, and we will always try to do the best job that we can for the citizens of this community, 'cause they deserve no less. I invite all of you, tomorrow morning, we're having a ceremony in front of the Brownsville Police Department Headquarters at 10 o'clock, to join us for that special ceremony that will be followed by a luncheon shortly thereafter. So, once again, Mayor, Commissioners, and to the public and the citizens of this community, Mr. Kavler, Mr. Traella, thank you for all the support throughout the years to the Brownsville Police Department. Thank you.[545.04][545.04](Applause).
Chief, I just want to make sure, tomorrow, this ceremony's gonna take place tomorrow at our Brownsville Police Department at 10:00 AM, is that right?
Yes.
All right, and then the public is invited?
Yes.
All right. Next proclamation is the Architectural Heritage Day. Commissioner Royall.
Is there anyone here from Hudson? Yes, great, please come on up.
Don't be afraid, we don't bite hard. Hello, welcome.
All right. This is a proclamation of the City Commission of Brownsville, Texas, designating May 15, 2007, as Architectural Heritage Day in our city. Whereas it is important for the young people of our community to be literate and knowledgeable about the world about them, whereas our community encourages awareness, appreciation, and understanding of the rich architectural structures found in Brownsville, and works to preserve them through the efforts of our institutions of higher education, historical museums, and officers, and private citizens. Whereas Mrs. Noel Kendall's fourth-grade students at Hubert R. Hudson Elementary School responded to this encouragement and researched and wrote an educational supplement which celebrates Brownsville's diverse and irreplaceable architectural heritage. And whereas the Brownsville Herald's newspaper in education program produced and published the educational supplement to instill in our community a sense of appreciation, pride, and stewardship for Brownsville's unique historic buildings and architectural heritage. And whereas our community appreciates the efforts of Mrs. Kendall and her Hudson Elementary School students, and further supports the Brownsville Herald's newspaper in education program and the valuable service it provides to our entire community. Now therefore, we, the members of the City Commission of the City of Brownsville, Texas, by virtue of the authority vested by the Charter of said city, we do hereby designate May 15, 2007, as Architectural Heritage Day in our city, and we further encourage all of our citizens to celebrate and to appreciate our rich architectural heritage during this month of May, which is National Preservation Month. This was done on the 15th day of May, 2007, signed by Mayor Eddie Trevino Jr. and the city commissioners. Congratulations, students.
All right, Hudson.[730.12][730.12](Applause).
We expect a lot more.[738.04][738.04](Laughter).
Ms. Principal? I don't wanna say just Rita. How are you?
Good evening. On behalf of the teachers and the wonderful students at Hudson, I'd like to thank you for recognizing their efforts. But truly, the partnership like this is an amazing thing to watch unfold. And education can only be great if we all take the time to partner together and work together. We're only as good as the partnerships we have with people in our community. So I thank the city and Mr. Garvito for the countless hours he worked with our students. I thank the Herald for coming forward. All these wonderful leaders with expertise worked with our students, because we are a community that's rich in culture and rich in history. And we're rich in future, because our kids are great. So I thank you for taking the time. I thank Ms. Kendall, she's one of the most amazing teachers. So thank you very much.
Keep up the great work.[794.88][794.88](Applause). All right, Commissioner Camarillo, Art on Wheels Week. Somebody could drive in in a Harley?[813.12][813.12](Laughter). Hi, how are you?
Hi, congratulations. Nice to see you. You guys lost?
A proclamation of the City of Brownsville, Texas, designating May 21 through 25, 2007, as Art on Wheels Week in our city. Whereas the Brownsville urban system has been providing public transportation services and programs to residents and visitors of Brownsville since July 1978, and whereas BUS seeks out to establish valuable community partnerships to promote the use of public transportation by students, teachers, and other citizens, thereby educating the public and helping to reduce traffic congestion and limit automobile pollution. And whereas the fine arts are an essential part of a well-rounded education and a fulfilling life, and whereas BUS wishes to expose its passengers and citizens of Brownsville to artwork created by these groups, thereby enhancing the appearance of local facilities and promoting the fine arts. Now therefore, we, the members of the City Commission of the City of Brownsville, Texas, by virtue of the authority vested by the Charter of said city, and on behalf of all our citizens, do hereby designate May 21 through May 25, 2007, as Art on Wheels Week in our city, and urge all our residents to view the artwork inside transit buses and shelters throughout Brownsville, and to become active in education and advocacy efforts to promote the vital role of public transit in Brownsville and the United States. Done on this 15th day of May, 2007, signed by the mayor, Eddie Trevino Jr., and the city commission. Thank you.
Congratulations. Who gets the podium?
Mayor and Commissioner, I'm gonna introduce Rodney Gomez, Assistant Director for BUS, who had the foresight to make this effort possible, and he's got a few words he'd like to say.
Good evening, Commissioners and the public. On behalf of the Brownsville urban system, I would like to extend my sincerest gratitude for issuing this proclamation, and I also wanted to especially recognize the Brownsville Museum of Fine Arts, especially Renata Lara Ali, and BISD, especially Dr. Rebecca Rendon, for their hard work and their effort in cooperating with us on this very great event. And we do have a wealth of artistic talent in this community, it's just amazing to see it, and BUS is very happy to be able to showcase some of this artwork on our buses. And we extend the invitation for anyone to come and ride on our vehicles to view this artwork. And I believe someone else has a few words.
I just wanted to thank all of you. I know this isn't a first time, Mr. Trevino, you have supported the fine arts in many ways in BISD, and we really appreciate that, and all of the commissioners. And actually, when Rodney came to me, this was great, because we are always looking for ways to showcase our fine art students. We have incredible talent in our district. So when he came to me, and it was like, this is a fantastic idea, and we started getting some artwork together. So as you can see here, you will see next week, all of the different artwork that will be displayed. It's a fantastic idea. I know they do it in other places, I'm so glad that we're doing it now here in Brownsville. And you'll be able to see from elementary all the way to high school, the talent that we have here, and I just appreciate the support that all of you are giving here in the city, and you'll have some beautiful artwork to see on the buses and the shelters now. So thank you very much, on behalf of BISD.
Thank you. Thank you, Vic.[1063.83][1063.83](Applause).
Renata, would you hold that up so the public can see this?
Oh, wow.
And it'll give them a taste of what they can see on the buses.
Thank you.
Just a few words. My name is Renata Lara Ali, I'm here representing the Board of Directors, the staff, and the members of the Brownsville Museum of Fine Art. I just want to say that fine art is very important for the mental and cultural development of our community. It not only enhances us emotionally and intellectually, but also financially, as of course cities with fine art venues and institutions attract visitors from around all of the United States and beyond into our cities. When I was approached with this project, I said, I told Rodney and Alex, and I said, "Oh, my goodness, we're doing this now? That's excellent. You came to the right place. You want art? We have art. And we have artists, and we know a lot of local artists." And I'd like to thank all of our artists. We are going to be showing about 24 professional artists local in this project, in the Arts on Wheel project at the shelters, as well as, I believe, over 40 student artworks. So just look at that. This is just the beginning. We have so much artistic power in our city, in our community, and we are letting them show their skills, and we're letting our community see everything that we have to offer. On behalf of the museum, I wish to thank everybody for your support, our city, our leaders, for your continued support, and personally, I'd really like to thank the Brownsville urban system for giving the museum, the Brownsville Museum of Fine Art, the opportunity to be part of this magnificent artistic project. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you very much. All right, at this time, we're gonna move to Item 2 regarding some presentations that we have. Joining us this evening are some very special friends of ours from our sister city, from Matamoros, Tamaulipas, Mexico. In particular, I want to recognize the First Lady of Matamoros, Ms. Marcela Ronquillo de Inojosa. They are here this evening to do a short presentation on el desarrollo integral de la familia, otherwise known as DIF, and she brought just a few friends with her from Matamoros. So please, let's all give them a welcome hand.
Good evening to everyone. It's an honor to be here. It's the first time that I personally am here. And I want to thank the city commissioners, the city of Brownsville, for permitting us to be here in this great evening. To honor our mayor in Brownsville, Eddie Trevino, our close friend of Matamoros, and if you would permit me, public and city commissioners, I would like to speak in Spanish.
Absolutely.
From the heart. De parte del presidente municipal, Baltasar Inojosa, estamos aquí dos instituciones y patronatos muy importantes de Matamoros. Dos instituciones como es el sistema integral de la familia, que es el desarrollo integral de nuestras familias en Matamoros, y el patronato de cultura de fiestas mexicanas, que durante estos dos años y medio que hemos trabajado juntos, sentimos que para nosotros era hoy un día muy importante venir personalmente, entregar dos reconocimientos de parte de la cultura y de parte de las familias de Matamoros.
Puedo pasar?
Claro que sí. Para nosotros es un honor entregarle a un hombre que ha entregado también su visión, pero sobre todo su corazón, y que nos ha enseñado junto con nuestro presidente municipal en Matamoros, que hay que construir, pero puentes, para unir estas dos naciones. Que estos lazos realmente se reflejan en nuestras familias en ambos lados de estos dos países. Que esta fraternidad une a dos pueblos, pero sobre todo se ve reflejado en el desarrollo, independientemente que yo sé que el presidente municipal le tiene sorpresa y reconocimiento también por todas las amplias acciones que ha hecho en el desarrollo económico, pero sobre todo habla de una persona que ha entregado su corazón por lo más importante en ambos países, por nuestras raíces y por nuestras familias. Por eso hoy, un grupo pues representativo de estos dos patronatos, del DIF y de fiestas mexicanas, está aquí porque nos sentimos muy orgullosos. Nos sentimos muy orgullosos y bendecidos que en este tiempo nos haya tocado un presidente o un mayor aquí en Brownsville, que tenga ese corazón, que tenga esa visión, pero sobre todo que tenga ese espíritu de promover la cultura, nuestra historia, y sobre todo el que nuestras familias estén bien. Y una frase que los dos, el mayor y el presidente municipal en Matamoros siempre dicen, si Matamoros está bien, Brownsville está bien. Y si ellos, y si estas dos naciones están bien, yo creo que es un signo de paz, de unidad, que se refleja en todo el mundo. Por eso, y por sus acciones que siempre han sido traducidas en hechos, muchísimas gracias de parte de todas las familias de Matamoros, y muchísimas gracias por todo ese apoyo y por todo ese entusiasmo de parte de su familia y de toda la ciudad de Brownsville para promover la cultura y nuestras familias. Gracias, Eddie. Y aquí te entregamos, bueno, te entrega nuestro presidente del patronato, Alisa, un... Los dos reconocimientos tienen algo muy simbólico. Este, de parte del patronato de fiestas mexicanas, el tiempo, que no habrá tiempo nunca en la amistad, que es lo que se ha promovido en fiestas mexicanas, y que queremos que ambas ciudades sigan reflejando esta historia y esta cultura por las siguientes generaciones, como lo han hecho ustedes, y sobre todo, Eddie, esa pasión y esa emoción en fiestas mexicanas para promover la cultura en nuestros niños y en toda nuestra ciudad. Y el tiempo nunca va a ser el límite en este amor que le tienes a Matamoros y a Brownsville. Y otro, que es el de las familias matamorenses, pues, de parte del DIF te entregamos nuestro corazón, y que siga latiendo siempre el corazón en tu familia, que Dios te bendiga siempre con ese espíritu que tienes por promover la paz, la unidad, y las familias. Gracias. Aquí aprovechamos porque de la fundación de Avalon en México, también por sumarse el esfuerzo de informar, sensibilizar, le dejaron la vez pasada un reconocimiento que le hacemos entrega. Por algo también muy importante, por promover de manera binacional la cultura y la prevención en nuestros jóvenes, que ha sido uno de los cimientos que el sector educativo de ambas ciudades, la ciudad de Brownsville y Matamoros también ha hecho un esfuerzo muy fuerte junto con las partes de seguridad pública de ambos ciudades, de Matamoros y Brownsville han hecho por la prevención de nuestros jóvenes, en el Foro Binacional.
Mayor Eddie, el grupo de fiestas mexicanas tuvo la suerte de trabajar juntos estos cuatro años, con mucha hermandad, apoyando a nuestras fronteras para que se unieran y fueran una sola, y así fomentar y cultivar nuestras tradiciones. Gracias, Eddie, a ti y a toda tu familia, y que Dios te bendiga.
Mayor? Congratulations. Yeah, congratulations, Eddie.
Congratulations, Mayor.
You wanna say a few words? Yeah, let me say a few words. Since I never get to speak at these meetings. A ver, podríamos practicar mi español. Primeramente, le quiero dar las gracias a Marcela y a Baltasar, y a todos que están aquí hoy en la noche, que he conocido estos cuatro años, los dos años y medio trabajando con ustedes. Ha sido un gran honor, un gran privilegio, por parte de su servidor, de unir y trabajar para el beneficio de Matamoros, así como de Brownsville. Me da mucho gusto, también me da mucho sentimiento, estos reconocimientos, porque obviamente ya se está terminando mi término como alcalde, pero las memorias que tengo, las experiencias que he tenido con ustedes, trabajando, festejando con ustedes, son cosas que se van a quedar conmigo por toda mi vida, y lo agradezco mucho, mucho, mucho. Por favor, le pasan mi gracias, mi atención, mi cariño, a mi compadre, a mi alcalde, al presidente municipal Baltasar Inojosa, por favor. All right, let me see if I can say that in English. I wanted to express my sincere thanks and gratitude to Marcela and Alicia and everybody else who's here on behalf of the DIF and the fiestas mexicanas. For the last four years, it's been a great honor and a privilege to work with them and with the mayor's office in Matamoros, working together to promote and cultivate a working relationship that I think in the past we had not taken full advantage of. We have had great, great successes already, which are tangible, and I know that it's gonna continue. It's bittersweet for me here this evening to accept these awards and these recognitions, because obviously my term is coming to an end, but the memories and the experiences that I've had working with everybody from Matamoros at the leadership level and at the volunteer level, all the way down, has been an enormous experience, an enormous emotional ride, and I know that these experiences and memories will serve me well and will be with me for the rest of my life. So on behalf of myself and my family, I give you all the thanks and appreciation and much love for these awards, these recognitions. I know they come from the heart, and that's why it's so special to me. So muchisimas gracias, I agradezco mucho. Muchisimas gracias.[1792.72][1792.72](Applause).
All right. I think I should just end the meeting there on a high note. We'll keep going. We have another presentation this evening from Caminos del Rio, Mr. Eric Elman. Marcela, no se preocupen, si ya es tiempo, si ya se pueden ir. Ahí nos vemos.
Well, thank you, Mayor. Thank you, commissioners. This is my first time here tonight. Very interesting. It seems like I picked a really good day to come. It's really a pleasure to see how much emphasis you obviously, you know, place, how much importance you give to history and culture here. You know, just the fact that we're meeting in this fabulous building is great. And it, you know, means a lot to me because for eight months now, I've been the head of this organization, Los Caminos del Rio, and you should all have a copy of our latest brochure. I've got 5,000 of these for you, and a box load for anyone who's still here today who wants to take some of this. Any representatives of any cultural preservation, educational or anything organizations, all those legacies are detailed in this beautiful folder, which I have to thank you guys for your historic support in having produced. This is something that, it's in its eighth or ninth edition now, and because Brownsville is one of the founding members of the corridor, and that's what Los Caminos is, it's a cultural environmental heritage organization that preserves and promotes the environmental and cultural legacies of the entire border, not just Brownsville, but all the way up the river to Laredo and then Nuevo Laredo back down to Matamoros on both sides of the border. Brownsville's featured heavily, you know, obviously with all the historical buildings you've got, you're a real anchor, you know, in this program. And it's a program that in its first 10 years, back in the 90s, funneled about $17 million into preservation projects. It was started by the Texas Historical Commission, they founded, or they helped get money to initially start the renovation of the Port Isabel Lighthouse, Joe Gavito, Peter Gugn could tell you better than I could how many buildings here in Brownsville, the Hidalgo County Pump House, Republic of the Rio Grande Museum up in Laredo, the Old Cathedral and Guerrero Viejo, among other things. We were begun with historical preservation foremost in mind, and over the last couple of years, the organization's begun shifting its emphasis. We have a new direction now, and they sort of hired me specifically for that. You know, the valley, the corridor, the problems that the communities face aren't the same as they were 15 years ago. You know, we've now got this public health epidemic of diabetes, you know, 50% of the people in this room are projected to get diabetes in the course of their lifetime. It's now affecting even our kids. So one of the things that I proposed and the organization agreed to when they hired me was to begin shifting the emphasis from preservation of these individual places in these cities, and to start encouraging the public to get out and visit them by virtue of hiking, biking, and even paddle trails, either on the river or along the river and between the communities that connect them. So the idea is now to get people to start appreciating their culture better. Get healthier in the process. And we sort of started that with the health fair that Senator Lucio asked us to participate with back in November. We actually proposed the name, you know, he said, "I want to do something more than a typical health fair, I wanted something with real regional flavor." And we proposed, "Let's call it the Resaca-thon. Let's, you know, focus on, you know, this environmental legacy of Brownsville, these resacas that," again, I got to commend you guys and Joey Nohosa and Carlos Ayala, "over the years, you know, you took something that was a real challenge to work with, these resacas, and I think you've done a great job preserving them and making them potential real amenities for the community." And it's specifically something that involves the resacas that I want to talk to you about tonight. If you'll turn the next page of this handout that you've got, there's an article that we got Roomba to do, we took them down the river with us a couple of months ago, and actually it was, it was actually a little longer than that. And we talked about the potential of using the river as a resource to actually improve people's health. You know, the river's got a horrible public relations problem, and we're seeing the, unfortunately, you know, one of the worst possible results of that now with, you know, the potential for a wall being constructed there. And we're proposing that, you know, one of the ways to create a virtual wall is to start developing the river as a recreational resource. There's 750,000 Texans a year that go out and pay money to go paddle on a river, third leading state in the country. We've got one organization that leads paddle tours, the Friends of the Santa Ana Refuge, for 10 years have been leading paddle trips on the Rio Grande. They take about 700 to 1,000 people down every year, they've never had an incident, and unfortunately, when the winter Texans go home, they close shop. Locals just don't go there. People who grew up here have unfortunately such a bad idea about the river that no one goes there, and since no one goes there, everyone continues to have this bad idea because all we hear are the negative things about it. I'd like to come back to your next meeting and show you some video of some of our trips and some of the municipal officials that we took out recently. We took out the leaders of Miguel Aleman and Roma together on a joint cleanup of the river. We ended up having about 200 people out there, we had Una Visión out there, they shot a three and a half minute video, and the point of the video was to have something that they could take to Washington and to say, "Look, you want to make the border safe, you want to discourage illegal activity, why don't we encourage legal activity?" So, we went to the Meadows Foundation. The article on the third page here, it says, "Group out to change Rio Grande's image." That was from the San Antonio Express, that was after that outing back last fall. We went to the Meadows Foundation and we said, "Look, we think we can, we can do a lot for the community in terms of increasing people's health and even increasing economic opportunities for people." Because again, 750,000 people, less than a tenth of 1% of them went paddling on the Rio Grande. So, we got a small grant, we got 28 kayaks, we've given them away to different youth groups around the valley. About 14 of them are down here in Brownsville with Jesús Trevino from Troop One, he takes his Venture Scouts out all the time. We think that we, well, we don't think, we've got a commitment from a group called American Rivers in Washington, DC. It's a 65,000 member organization. They lobby for river access around the country. In the northwest, they take down dams so the salmon can swim upstream. They also have a program now that they're launching, they're called Blue Trails. They want to create blue trails, like hike and bike trails, but on the water, for people to paddle in urban centers around the country. I visited with them in Washington and convinced them that if they're going to start anywhere, they should start down here where there's so little river access and where, you know, the health challenges are so great. And they have agreed. So they're already seeking funding, and we think, and if you can screen ahead here, some of our, we've got, Westleco has committed to opening their, one of their city pools as a kayak training center for guides up in, if you can go to the next image. Well, okay, here in Brownsville, it's too, you can't really see that photo too well because of the lights in the room, but that's a photo of one of the resacas running right through town. What we'd like to do is, we want to, we think we can turn Brownsville into a center for urban paddling. You've got so many resacas, the spin-off benefit of this, besides, you know, the public health opportunities, is to provide more incentive for people to plant native vegetation, which is going to bring up property values, and it gives you the opportunity to attract, attract young professionals who, you know, are graduating from school, and when they're looking for a place to relocate, they're looking at quality of life issues foremost. And, you know, we think that, you know, this is one more thing to help Brownsville get there. Our grant from Meadows is for a quarter of a million dollars. Now, that is money that's all going to go to administrative expenses. Over the years, Brownsville's given us $16,000 a year, and that money has been virtually all eaten up by administration. So it's going to free up the money that you've traditionally committed to us by getting this money from Meadows, it's going to allow me to hire some staff. And what we have been challenged by Meadows to do is demonstrate we've got a matching commitment before they'll give us that money. So your $16,000 for 2007 was just paid a couple of months ago, but one of the things that I am going to, I don't think this is the right venue perhaps, maybe we need to visit afterwards, but we're going to ask you to make a commitment for 2008 funding to renew it. But because we're actually talking about launching some community programs that...
Let me ask you something real quick. How much did we give you last year?
$16,000.
And where did it go? I mean, what did it do for Brownsville?
What did it do for Brownsville? Well, it enabled us to continue promoting you as part of a corridor destination, paid for assistance with any preservation projects that came our way in November, paid for us to come up with the Resaca-thon idea and to help promote an art contest. And you've got 14 kayaks with Troop One, they've been, I don't know, I can't give you the numbers of trips, but, you know, they've been in use constantly. What we'd like to do is actually make an investment in more programs like that, and that's what...
What will the wall do for your program?
It's going to really threaten it. It's going to, it's going to limit the opportunity to promote Brownsville as a destination for ecotourism, certainly.
Go ahead.
Anything else you wanted to add, Mr. Elman?
I don't think so. Do you have any other questions?
Well, we appreciate the information that you brought to us. We understand that where it is that you'd like to try to go with this. I'm assuming what you're saying is that you'd like to ask for additional funds? Is that where you're going?
We want to do more programs, actually, in the community, where we're giving away more recreational equipment, training people, getting them certified, helping them start up small businesses that would, you know, continue to promote that sort of activity.
All right.
This brochure was also part of your last year's funding?
Yes.
It is beautiful.
Right.
Excellent, excellent. All right, well, keep up the great work, especially in this time right now where people outside the area may not appreciate what we already have. Thank you, Mr. Elman. Mr. Caveller, we have a very, very special Employee of the Month presentation this evening.
Yes, we do, Mayor. Members of the commission, in honor of Police Officer Memorial Week, we are going to give the award of the Employee of the Month to one of our officers. As you know, all our employees that receive this honor are very special, very special employees, but today, we want to honor one of our American heroes, one of our police officer heroes, and he's here with his mother and wife and his three children. And please help me welcome Officer Rolando Trujillo. Officer Trujillo's been an officer with our department since October of 1994. He's received recognition as one of our finest officers, he was given an award at a police banquet last year. And as you know, he got, he got one of the ultimate calls that an officer gets, he responded to a call where the home invasion, six family members were in danger, some of them children. He chose to enter the home along with fellow officers, and he was greeted with gunfire. He didn't give up, he returned gunfire, secured the home with the assistance of his fellow officers. And the family members of that home today are safe, thanks to his and his fellow officers' actions, disregarding their safety, taking it upon himself to say, "I'm going to take care of these family, I'm going to, I'm going to do my job, and I'm going to help them," going basically beyond the call of duty. So we are very proud to give him the small token of appreciation, which is Employee of the Month, and of course, he is eligible for Employee of the Year in our banquet at Christmas time. So I'm sure he's got some words to express his thanks for this, but this is one of many honors that he should receive during the time that he is away from work. But what he's doing is, he's doing everything possible to get well, return to his normal family life, and believe it or not, he wants to come back to work as soon as possible. So we admire him a whole bunch. So please welcome again Officer Rolando Trujillo.
Mayor, commissioners, Sheriff's Police and State Major, I'd like to say thank you for his honor and its privilege working for this great city. Thank you once again.
Officer, if I may real quick, Officer Trujillo, we owe you the thanks, and thank you on behalf of my family and all the citizens of Brownsville for all the hard work and dedication you've put in, and let's give a big round of applause to your family, who also went through a hard time. Thank you very much. Thank you for your support.
Of course, we're going to give him the traditional cap, the pin, and...
Just a hat?
And the black.
Okay, it was black.
And I'm sure some of us will take them and eat it soon as well.
I'm going to offer an extra lunch, Officer Trujillo, okay? That's the least that any of us can do. Goes without saying that we are so, so happy that you are here with us this evening, as I know your family feels the same way. You're in our prayers, and we know, we appreciate everything that you've done and everything that you're going to continue to do, but know that in our minds and in our hearts, you will always, always be a hero. Thank you so much for serving.
Thank you.
Chief, go ahead.
Mayor, definitely when one of our officers or any officer gets wounded or shot in the line of duty, following proper protocol, the officer shall receive the Purple Heart. This is something that in our department, we have never done. We have recognized people, the officers that have been shot in the line of duty, definitely that's something that will be done. It's in the works. I'm awaiting for the medals or citations or ribbons to come in, and we will have a special ceremony at the PD, hopefully in the near future, to recognize Officer Trujillo and some of our other officers that have been shot in the line of duty in the past years. And I will keep you all posted and send out invitations when that ceremony is to be conducted at the police department.
Thank you, Chief.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
All right, item three, Consent Agenda.
Item three, Consent Agenda, items A through E.
Motion to approve. Motion to approve by Commissioners Nettles, seconded by Commissioner Longori, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. We're going to skip to item 10, or nine first? 10 first? All right, item 10.
Item 10, consideration and action to adopt a project agreement between the city of Brownsville and Cameron County Regional Mobile Authority for fiscal year 2007.
Pete, I don't want you to think that just because you're here, you know, I take you out of order, I do that for everybody, I'm just... Oh, he is.
Which Pete, Mayor?
There you go, there you go. Good job.
Mayor and commissioners, for the last several years, the Texas Department of Transportation had been advising the local MPOs all along the state that every year, the funding that would be available for local projects was going to get less and less and less, and that unless the communities, cities and counties and MPOs got together and looked for creative ways on funding projects, that we're not going to have enough funding to fund the projects that were needed to keep up with the infrastructure growth in cities and counties like Cameron County. The state legislature a couple of years ago gave the counties the ability to create regional mobility authorities and use those authorities as a vehicle to fund projects out of the normal and traditional TxDOT method of funding projects, and that would allow projects in the Cameron County area to get funded way ahead of schedule. Projects that perhaps would take 10, 15, 20 years to get funded through the RMA, you know, we could get them funded, you know, in half the time or less if we had the proper financing tools in place. So Cameron County went and petitioned the Texas Transportation Commission in June of '04 to create a regional mobility authority, and September of '04, the commission unanimously created the regional mobility authority, the directors were appointed, one of our directors, Victor Alvarado, is in the audience, Governor Perry appointed the chairman of the authority, and we started conducting business in February of 2005. One of the things that we found out immediately is that TxDOT had no grant money to help the RMA get started. And so, what we did, we went to Cameron County requesting funding so that we could get started on some of the projects that we're working on. We got $275,000 from the county. We went to Port Isabel and showed them the projects that we would be working on, and we got $25,000 from them. We went to South Padre Island, and we got $25,000 from them. We went to City of San Benito, and we got $25,000 from them. Went to City of Harlingen, did the same thing, and we got $50,000 from them. And so, that's what we're doing tonight. There is numerous projects that the RMA is working on that'll have an impact on the city of Brownsville. And probably the two biggest projects that we're working on that will have a huge impact, positive impact in the city of Brownsville is the US-77 and upgrading that to an interstate standard corridor. As you all know, south of I-37 and Corpus, you know, that is where the interstate ends. And we've been working on a project to convert US-77 into an interstate corridor. The other project is the Second Causeway Project at South Padre Island. As you all know, last year, we received over $20 million from the Texas Transportation Commission to be able to further advance the Second Causeway Project and the West Loop Project in the Brownsville area. That funding that we received from the Highway Commission can only be used for engineering services to include environmental assessments or environmental impact statements, planning and design of those projects. So, those monies cannot be used for administrative expenses. In addition to that, the RMA is working, as you all know, you all funded the RMA, to do the international coordination for the West Loop Project. We're working with the Brownsville Public Utilities Board and doing international coordination on the Brownsville Weir Project. We're also talking to Texas about possibly getting involved on the East Loop Project through a pass-through financing project, and we're working with Congress, Senator Hutchinson in particular, to try and get funding for the East Loop Project.
Where are we on that? Just being-
I'm sorry?
That's where we're at? We're waiting for-
Actually, in the East Loop, we're waiting for an environmental clearance to be able to proceed with that project. Environmental clearance, you know, normally, depending on the size of the project, on the complexity of the project, take between 12 to 18 months to get environmentally cleared. And I think we're at the tail end of that. We should get a funding of no significant impact, you know, in the near future. One of the things, the other things, Mayor, and you're very aware of this, because over the last couple of months, you've been in meetings and conference calls with Senator Lucio, with Representative Lucio. As you all know, there have been several bills in the Senate, in the House, that would put a moratorium on comprehensive development agreements, total projects in the state of Texas. Those bills would have negatively impacted our ability to convert US-77 into an interstate corridor. It would, it would impede our ability to proceed with the Second Causeway Project. Just yesterday, the Senate passed on a 31-to-zero vote, a new version of a transportation bill-
What was the vote?
Thirty-one to zero in the Senate.
Was thirty-one to zero?
And that would, that bill would allow us to continue to move forward with the US-77 project, the extension of I-37 from the Corpus Christi, Noces County area, into the Brownsville, Cameron County area. That bill will also allow us to move forward with the Second Causeway Project. And so, we've been monitoring these bills, you know, from, you know, since January the ninth, when the legislative session began. What we're requesting from the city of Brownsville is $75,000, and this will allow us to continue to work on the projects that we're currently working on. And, you know, what we do with other entities that have funded us is, you know, provide quarterly reports to those organizations. We can do that on a monthly basis, you know, or on an as-needed basis, as required by city administration. But we're very proud of what we've been able to accomplish up to now, and we look forward to the relationship that we've built with the city of Brownsville.
Pete, let me just point out to everybody that the Cameron County Regional Mobility Authority has basically been the model for the rest of the state. You were the first ones to jump on this project, and thankfully, the city's been a part of the progress. I think it's imperative that we continue the cooperation between the city and the county Mobility Authority to the benefit of our entire region. So, I would move that we adopt the project agreement.
Second.
Seconded by Commissioners Nettles. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries. Item Nine-
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners.
Yes, sir.
Item Nine, Consideration in Action to Adopt a Budget Amendment Resolution Number 2007-026 to amend the general fund by $75,000 to provide funding to the Cameron County Regional Mobility Authority as per a project agreement.
Honorable Mayor, Members of the City Commission, this is a budget amendment that staff recommends that you approve.
Would approve.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Camarillo, seconded by Commissioners Nettles. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries. Thank you. Good luck. All right, Item Four.
Item Four, Public Hearing in Action on First Reading of Ordinance Number 235-2007-015 to rezone from Dwelling G to General Retail G, Classification One Acre out of Block 26 of El Harleen subdivision located near Boca Chica Boulevard and Central Avenue.
Honorable Mayor, City Commissioners, the area is shaded in red in the map. Turn the map around. This area right here is Boca Chica, Central Avenue. In this particular case, the applicant would like to have a party place, building to have kids' birthday parties, et cetera. The Plans Order Commission voted unanimously to approve this application to you for approval.
This is a public hearing?
Would it close?
Motion to close by Commissioner Camarillo, seconded by Commissioner Roy. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries. Action.
Would it approve?
Motion to approve by Commissioner Longoria, seconded by Commissioner Camarillo. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries. Item Five.
Item Five, Public Hearing in Action on First Reading of Ordinance Number 235-2007-016 to rezone from Dwelling A, Classification to Light Retail G, Classification 1.08 acres out of Block 25 of El Harleen subdivision located near Boca Chica Boulevard and Central Avenue.
Honorable Mayor and City Commissioners, the area here is shaded in red. This is Boca Chica, Central Avenue. In this particular case, the applicant would like to have a daycare center. The Plans Order Commission voted unanimously on this application.
Move to close public hearing?
Thank you.
Motion to close public hearing by Commissioner Roy, seconded by Commissioner Camarillo. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries. Action.
Move to approve.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Roy, seconded by Commissioner Camarillo. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries. Item Six.
Item Six, Public Hearing in Action on First Reading of Ordinance Number 235-2007-017 to rezone from Dwelling Z to Medium Retail G, Classification Lot 6, Block 3 of Pasto Verde subdivision located near State Highway 100 and California Road.
This is the area shaded in red here. This is Highway 100, and 803 is here. Los Fresos CTJ is over here in this area. The Plans Order Committee unanimously to approve this application, and was recommended to you.
This is a public hearing?
Would it close?
Motion to close by Commissioner Camarillo, seconded by Commissioner Roy. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries. Action.
Would it approve?
Motion to approve by Commissioner Longoria, seconded by Commissioner Atkinson. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries. Item Seven.
Item Seven, Public Hearing in Action on First Reading of Ordinance Number 235-2007-602-CU to allow a conditional use permit to sell on-premise alcohol for 0.894 acres out of Block 13 of El Harleen subdivision located near Old Port Isabel Road and Warwick Glen Street.
Honorable Mayor and City Commissioners, this is the property here on Old Port Isabel Road. This is Old Port Isabel, Winter Haven subdivision on the north. This is an existing restaurant, and they would like to sell alcoholic beverages with the meals. The Plans Order Commission voted unanimously on this application.
This is a public hearing?
Would it close?
Motion to close by Commissioner Longoria, seconded by Commissioner Atkinson. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries. Action.
Would it approve?
Motion to approve by Commissioner Longoria, seconded by Commissioner Atkinson. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries. Item Eight.
Item Eight, Consideration in Action on Resolution Number 2007-025 to Support the Passage by the Texas Legislature of House Bill 3181, Regulating the Stoppage of Trains Blocking Streets, Railroad Crossings, or Public Highways, and Providing an Effective Date.
This is the item that you brought to my attention, Stella, correct?
Yes, it is, sir.
All right. I hope the Commissioners took a quick look at it. It's self-explanatory. The Mayor of Justin, basically, is asking all the communities around the state to support and lobby the legislature to approve this legislation. The point of the legislation is to allow the local cities and local governments more ability to address the issue of stalled or, well, stalled trains that greatly intensify the, both the emergency issues, delays, health issues that stalled or stopped trains cause in each of our communities. So, we thought we'd bring this to the Commission's attention and ask for favorable consideration.
Where's John Sherwood in all of this?
I'm sure he would, yeah, he ought to appreciate this. Motion to approve by Commissioner Camarillo, seconded by Commissioner Atkinson. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries. Item Eleven.
Item Eleven, Consideration in Action to Purchase Property Located on Block A, Southwest Lots 5 and 6 of Brownsville original townsite.
Good evening, Mayor and City Commissioners. We're requesting your authorization to purchase property number six of the multimodal terminal project location as discussed in executive session.
All right. This is an action item.
Would it approve?
Motion to approve by Commissioner Roy, seconded by Commissioner Longoria. All in favor of this? Motion carries. Item Twelve.
Thank you.
Item Twelve, Consideration in Action to Request Funding in the Amount of $30,000 for the Fourth of July celebration.
Who's gonna handle this one, Charlie?
Mr. Mead's on his way. And this is, this is our contribution that we do on a yearly basis to the Fourth of July fireworks display.
Good evening, Mayor, City Commissioners. My name's Alex Mead, and I represent a group, a nonprofit group called South Texas Young Professionals.
South Texas what?
Young Professionals. I'm sorry. This is the third year that we organize the Fourth of July, as you all know, and it's made possible through the generous support from the Parks and Recreation Department. There's an allocation that's made in the budget for, in the amount of $30,000, and we would like to formally request that amount to continue the celebration and hopefully make it a better one this year.
I know that you guys have done a very good job with the use of these funds, and we get a lot of bang for our buck on the Fourth of July.
Pun intended.
This is an action item.
Would it approve?
Motion to approve by Commissioner Longoria.
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Camarillo. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Whoever laughed, I appreciate it. Item Thirteen.
Item Thirteen, Consideration in Action to Award a Contract for the Purchase of One Pierce 15-Gallon-Per-Minute Pumper for the Brownsville Fire Department.
Honorable Mayor, Members of the City Commission, at the request of the fire chief, the purchasing contracting department has obtained a buy board proposal under Section 791 contracts for purchases. This first response pumper will be utilized by the fire department. This new pumper is offered by Sidens Fire Apparatus of Manor, Texas via a buy board contract, sale quote 24506, in the amount of $349,500. Staff recommends your approval.
Any questions?
No move.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Longoria, seconded by Commissioner Atkinson. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries. Item Fourteen.
Item Fourteen, Consideration in Action to Award a Contract for the 31st Year Community Development Block Grant, Town North Subdivision Stormwater Improvement Project.
Honorable Mayor, Members of the City Commission, at the request of Planning and Community Director Ben Medina and Engineering Director Carlos Lostea, the purchasing contracting department solicited formal sealed bids for the aforementioned project. It is intent of the city of Brownsville to contract with the general contractor for the purpose of performing stormwater improvements by relocating existing 8-inch waterline and 12-inch force main around a proposed storm sewer with concrete spillways of various sizes, concrete driveway and sidewalk replacements, concrete alleyway apron valley gutters, and gasketed RCP Class IV 24, 30, and 48-inch pipes with Caliche access drive replacement type A curb detention pond excavation and stockpile in specific areas, including final grading of detention pond and stormwater. Project milestones were accomplished as follows. The legal advertisement appeared in the Herald twice on April 1st and April 8th, and was posted to the city's website April 2nd. A pre-bid meeting was conducted on Wednesday, April 18th. Four general contractors were represented at the pre-bid hearing. Requests for changes were submitted by contractors during the pre-bid and process. The requested changes were to modify the bid form quantities and materials, as well as to the modifications for drawings. The city engineer and the project consulting engineer approved the requested changes. One addendum to the bid specs and drawings was released to the participating contractors and posted to the website during the bid process. Sealed formal bids were opened for this subject project on Wednesday, May 2nd. There were two bids. They were both, one from Ferguson Construction and one from GNT Construction. The recommendation from staff is to award a contract for the 31st Year CDBG Town North Subdivision Stormwater Improvement Project to Donald D. Ferguson of Brownsville, Texas, a low-responsive bidder for a total base amount of $515,229.10. The engineer's cost estimate for this project was $19,205 higher than the bid. The recommendation is for your approval.
Move to approve.
Second.
Before we do that, real quick, I just want to make sure, there was such a disparity in the bids. Carlos, are you comfortable that we're not gonna have any change orders down the road? I see that it came in in line with your estimate, but there was such a huge disparity without going into each specific item.
Yeah, I know. We checked it out, and it should be okay. Ferguson is subcontracting Wall Street, which sits at the Garden Park project. So, they did a real good job out there, so we feel confident they'll perform this.
Very good. Motion to approve by Commissioner Roy, seconded by, seconded by Commissioner Nettles. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries. Project very, very long overdue. Item Fifteen.
Item Fifteen, Consideration in Action to Award a Term Contract for the Purchase and Delivery of Traffic Paint for the Use by the Brownsville Traffic Department.
Mayor, Members of the City Commission, at the request of Traffic Department, Purchasing Contracting Office, solicited formal sealed bids for paint. Legal advertisement appeared in the Herald on March 18th and was posted to the city's website. A pre-bid meeting was held on the 28th. No companies were represented. Two bids were received and opened for the subject project April 26th. Staff recommends the following. Consideration in Action to Award a Term Contract for the Purchase and Deliver of Traffic Paint for Use by the Brownsville Traffic Department to Centerline Supply, San Antonio, Texas, at a bid price of $34,866.75. Staff recommends approval.
All right, this is an action item.
No move.
Move to approve by Commissioner Longoria, seconded by Commissioner Atkinson. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries.
Thank you.
No public comments?
No, sir.
All right, this meeting is adjourned.
Thank you.